Good evening. Thanks for your patience. Uh, this is Monday, October 26th, 2020, and this is the North Andover Board Select Board meeting. Now pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Uh, so with that, I'd like to, uh, at least do one thing that we do at our meetings, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So we all stand and do a pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, first, uh, order of business is public comment. Um, and public comment, as in the past, when we've gone remote, uh, must be submitted at www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB public comments. Uh, do we have any public comments that were submitted previously?
There is no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Uh, then let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is, uh, public hearings pursuant to chapter, pursuant to MGL Chapter 166, Section 22. Uh, and again, comments may be submitted to, uh, this public hearing at www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB public comments. And first is, uh, National Grid Verizon, New England Joint Petition to Relocate Poll Number 873 on Prescott Street.
I think the Board of Selectmen opened the public hearing to receive comments regarding the National Grid Verizon, New England Joint Petition to relocate poll number 873 on Prescott Street.
Great. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor? We're all, we're all together now?
Yep.
Dizzying, isn't it?
It's all right.
We're all good. Okay. We're all here.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five zero, and we're, uh, in a session.
And I believe we do have a petition out from National Grid on the line.
Okay. Good. Can they speak? Uh, we're waiting for them to connect up, are we?
Say.
Okay.
Can they hear us? Anyone from there?
Hello?
Hello. Excellent. We got you.
Good evening, Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my, my name is Paul Cellegrini, and I'm an engineer, uh, with National Grid. And I'm here on behalf of Nat- uh, National Grid and Verizon. And it's, uh, and our first petition for poll 873 is required due to the, um, new condominium complex, uh, built at 80 High Street, uh, Avalon Bay. And when that complex was designed, uh, the electric, uh, infrastructure in that area could not support, uh, the construction of this, uh, community. So at the whole surrounding area, say quarter mile, all the electric, uh, infrastructure had to be upgraded, um, to support, um, the construction and, um, right reliability of the community. And one of the polls, they, as doing this, we wanted to try to improve some of the polls that, uh, we got a lot of complaints on. And make a long story short, on this poll, it was literally, uh, in one of our resident's driveway, right in the middle of his driveway, and he's been complaining for years. So what we're asking the council to allow us to do is to move that pole in, to his property line in between the two homes, so be out of his driveway.
Understand.
In the application of the order, there were petitions that were put on, are requested by DPW that I would request that you incorporate into your motion, um, and we have no public comment on either one of these as well.
Oh, great.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or concerns regarding this?
No, I happen to be on Prescott. I think the relocation will, will help them greatly. It looks like a much better location.
All right. Well, we, I hear a motion to close our hearing for this poll, eh?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? None? Passes five zero. Okay. And then we have another, um, um, National Grid petition to relocate a poll at 837 Prescott Street, um, same neighborhood. Um, I don't know if gentlemen could speak to this, uh, again?
Uh, yes. Uh, this poll is, is at the corner of Prescott in High Street on the island, and it's a poll that's, that supports via cables, um, three or four other poles, um, in its circumference in the area. And this poll is just in a, is right on the, it's, uh, right in the middle of the traffic island, and it's, uh, not only an eyesore, but it's, um, it's, it's kind of dangerous if somebody, um, like slipped in the snow or whatever, um, they would, they would hit the pole. It's really at a bad, uh, location, right in the middle of the street, in the center section. So we're proposing to move it, um, off to the side 10 feet.
Great. All right. Well, thank you for that. Okay.
Okay.
So we should have a motion to, uh, open the hearing, just so we have this properly, uh, processed? So the motion to open the hearing for the location of this poll at 834 Prescott Street.
Um, I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the National Grid petition to relocate poll number 834 on Prescott Street.
Second.
Great. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Close? None?
Okay, there are no public comments on this end.
Good. Any other comments from the board regarding this? It's nice to see these sort of things.
I actually did have a question. So the, the old polls will be removed, right? We're not going to leave them there?
Correct. No, they'll be, they'll be removed. Yeah.
And it'll be, they'll be filled and tar- and patched?
Yeah.
Appreciate the clarification. It had been an issue in the past, as, as you know. Any other comments or concerns relating to this? All hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Chair, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? None? Okay. Passes five zero. All right.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Uh, we now move to governmental reports, and, uh, at the top of our discussion tonight is obviously something very, you know, very important to us, and that's an update, um, on COVID and, and at Merrimack College, and very much appreciate, we've got several folks, I believe, Jeff Doggett and Andrew Mailer on the line. From our, our last meeting, I think there were a number of unanswered questions.
Unanswered questions.
And, uh, this is an opportunity to bring us up to date. And really, I think we, we hope tonight to really get clarity, uh, that is what happened, um, some edification as to what's been learned, and affirmation as to what's going to happen going forward. So, uh, with that, I'd ask our guests from Merrimack College to, uh, step forward and chat with us, please.
Uh, good night, good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Andrew Mailer. I'm joined with Jeff Doggett. Jeff Doggett is the Executive Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, Operating Officer for the college. Uh, President Doggett is our president.
Could, could folks please mute? If you're not on?
If you're not on?
Because we're getting some serious echo.
Serious echo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Andrew.
Sorry, Andrew.
No, I'm just getting a lot of feedback myself. Uh, so again, uh, my name is Andrew Mailer, I'm Vice President, Chief Financial Officer for the college. I'm tonight Jeff Doggett, Executive Vice President, Chief Financial Officer, Operating Officer. Dr. Doggett lives in North Andover and has a family in North Andover, and can speak to a lot of the specific details and questions that you may have. As you recall, I think to the board sometime in August, they reviewed, uh, more than 60-page document, which is the guideline for return to campus. I can tell you that we've implemented dozens of procedures that were in that guidebook. We've learned a lot from that process, quite frankly. And although our goal was never a goal, our expectation was that it was never that we were going to have zero cases on the campus, certainly we've had some experiences that have been positive and other experiences which have presented challenges to the college and broader community. And certainly, as you can see, we've talked about those in detail. Um, we continue to add an addition to the dozen individual procedures in classrooms and education and communication, that surveillance testing is an essential part of how a campus returns to operation. Although I know there are times that it's very complicated to see the numbers and what they may mean to the local community, uh, we are committed and continue to be committed, uh, to make sure that that surveillance testing stays in place because we think it protects not only the college community, but also the broader community. Uh, we've had great success. We recently, uh, put out a survey to faculty, staff, and students. The survey results show that, uh, the experience has been, uh, positive, certainly more complicated and different, uh, than the experience of college in the past, but that generally speaking, um, it has been a positive experience. Again, we're here to answer any specific questions, and I know Mr. Doggett has, uh, not only some statements, but can provide great detail, but I think it gives us an opportunity to speak about the experiences we've had over the last two months and what our plans are moving forward.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the council. Uh, this is Jeff Doggett, resident of 84 Johnson Street. Uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come in today. I, we are uniquely aware at Merrimack of the, the, uh, dual role that we play, uh, within North Andover, both as a resident business, um, and the benefits that we get from North Andover, uh, as well as the benefits that we provide to the town. And because of that, we also uniquely understand what happens, uh, when things can impact negatively on either side. And, um, we've spent a tremendous amount of time trying to mitigate and understand what goes on in terms of COVID. I know the town does as well. Uh, it's, it is a very difficult thing to make predictions on, which is why when we first laid out our plan, and I know, uh, Andrew brought to you, although our goal was to get the lowest possible number that we could possibly get in terms of positive cases on the campus, we did recognize that we were going to have some. Um, and, uh, we built a system, an asymptomatic symptom, surveillance testing symptom, uh, testing system, so that we would be able to identify as quickly as we possibly could when there was a positive on the campus. Because not only do we have approximately 2,100 students living on the campus, but we have over, uh, 900 students that come onto the campus as commuters, and then nearly 500 to 600 resident, uh, excuse me, uh, faculty and staff, many of which who are residents of North Andover, come onto the campus as well. And we want to make sure that with all of that coming and going, if there is any, any positive case on the campus, that we identify it, isolate that person, quarantine any contacts, using the contact tracing system that we partner with North Andover, which are very appreciative of that partnership. Uh, and then unfortunately, in the case of Monican Hall, which is what drove up the numbers, uh, what we saw very quickly was a really unique situation where there were a number of students that we believe, uh, did not get it from each other, but uniquely had it, just were, happened to have it all in the same building. And then that created a spread within their subunits. Uh, and we derive that mostly from the notion that Monican Hall is in fact virtually three separate buildings, all come together with one central, uh, core. Um, the architecture is different, the way the buildings are set up is different, the type of student in there is different. And so, um, after a lot of background, we, we better understand how that Monican situation has happened and done our best, um, to try to mitigate the potential of that happening again. I'm sure there are lots of questions, but we're happy to answer, but I just wanted to give that broad overview.
So Monican is a residential dormitory? And you're saying that several different clusters existed in this one building?
Yeah. So, uh, so i- if you're familiar at all with, with Monican, it's actually three wings of, of a building. Um, and you, you enter in through one common core, but it's, it spiders off into three different directions. And from all the, the contact tracing and all the review that we've done, we don't believe that there was a single event for which every person in Monican that ultimately tested positive, uh, we don't believe that was all derived from one, one, um, one incident or one, uh, event. Uh, we, we are aware, I'm aware also as, as a resident. Um, I've heard everything from, there was a party at Royal Crest, to there was a party at UMass Lowell or UMass Amherst, there was a party at UNH. Um, but through all the effort that we've done, we don't have that as a central reason for why Monican itself occurred.
So with those students, they all live on campus, I mean, do you have any more insight to, I mean, I, I think that's concerning in a different way, right? And I would think that you as administrators would feel that? I mean, at least if there was a cluster attributed to that one activity or one student, you know, that's, that's an easier thing to resolve. But if you're saying that multiple students all contracted it separately and independently, all in the same dormitory, and they all live on campus, I mean, isn't that concerning in a very different way? Um, almost even more alarming?
No, first of all, if I can speak to it, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that I would identify the situation as alarming. I mean, COVID exists, it exists on the campus, it exists in North Andover. We've had your own recent experiences, it exists regionally and nationally. What, what Mr. Doggett identified was the belief that with students going home, which happens, as much as we've added additional programming and additional efforts to reduce students going home, this happens to be a particular population that went home. Um, with that, they come back, they interact with other students. I think the fact that it did not spread to other dormitories, in fact, shows that the steps taken in terms of testing, retesting, quarantining, and isolating. In fact, don't make it alarming at all. It's what happens when you end up with a close group of people living side by side, even the nature of the dormitory is different, leaving the campus and coming back with COVID. And, and so we've learned from that experience. Um, and I, I don't view it as alarming. I view it as an experience when you realize what's happened in terms of the spread of COVID, not just on college campuses, but it, you know, throughout the region, quite frankly, and throughout the state, throughout the nation.
So I said more alarming more in the relativity of if there's a cluster, right? If there's one activity or one event that led to all those students to get sick? I mean, this is one building, and you had a bunch of students leave, all contracted independently, and come back in. So I'm just curious, now, at least if it were one event, like there was a party, that's something that's, I would think a little bit more obvious in how you'd address it? If it's all of these students leaving separately and coming back, I think it's irrelevant that they're living in close proximity, because of course, you're saying that they all got it off of campus anyways. So what, I'm, this is, I'm just really curious, and I think every, you know, college and university is dealing with this, what are those steps that you have to take in order to make sure that, you know, moving forward, these kids aren't all leaving, contracting it independently and coming back? I mean, again, if it were a party, you know, you know how to put the kibosh on that, and we're seeing municipalities having to deal with that as well, uh, through the public school system all over Massachusetts. But that, that's what I mean by more alarming, is it seems like, again, you have all these students now going off and bringing it back for separate incidences. It, it really is a lot more of a complex situation than a single spreader event.
Yeah. I mean, so we, we had a, an incident in North Andover where we had, um, an event that was at someone's home that caused a few, um, positive cases. Um, I think, you know, that's an explainable situation, unfortunate, outside of our control, but it's, it at least explainable. I, I can't understand your, the explanation of what you're saying. It seems more likely that there was an event that happened and, and there was a, a super spreader event. I mean, let's face it, I mean, it, it seems more believable or more, to me, um, much more understandable that that, that's what happened, instead of saying people came in with it and just, um, in one dormitory. Um, but, but that's my opinion.
That's my opinion.
If, if, if I could, I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear. I, I'm not suggesting that, that, uh, however many students there were, they each individually got it leaving the campus. I'm saying that I don't believe there was a single event in which all of them were at and they all got it. Uh, I believe that, that there were probably two or three, or maybe even four people who left the campus and got it and came back, and then it spread within the building. So I, I apologize if, if that led people to assume that I thought that there were, you know, dozens and dozens of students that all left and all got it and came back. That, that's number one. Number two is, I actually agree with you that it would be easier if there was a single event. Uh, it would be, quite frankly, as painful as it would be, it would be easy to, to sit here and say, we identified the one particular area that, or the one particular event where this took place. Um, we take those very seriously. We would adjudicate that situation. Those students would not likely to have been remaining on the campus regardless of whether they got COVID or not. Um, we do handle situations where students break our rules. Our rules do not just stop at the, the edge of the campus. Um, so we do take all of that seriously. So yes, it would be, and I agree with you, it would be, in some respect, easier or better to explain it as a single, uh, single event, and that we were able to handle that. But unfortunately, in, in our situation, we don't believe that that be the case. Um, and so yes, it does add a level of complexity. Um, I agree with your assessment of what is alarming or not, not in terms of it being, uh, you know, a great concern, but it is, it is more difficult. And our takeaway from that is the following. One, we are trying to find more ways for students to stay on campus, and in some cases, that's offering them our opportunities to do things on campus. And more and more, it's actually reaching out to not just the students, but their parents and saying, don't come and get them, keep them on the campus. Uh, you know, that is difficult at times because some students do want to leave the campus. They actually do live in the community, or do work in the community, or do go to see doctors and dentists and things like that as well. So, and, and I appreciate greatly the concern of what a student does when they leave the campus and if they have it and the impact it may have on the community. But I also recognize that it's the reverse as well, that they're going out into the community and contracting this and then bringing back and transmitting it. And so, back to what, what Andrew said at the beginning, there is sort of this, this effort that continually goes on, that's always evolving and always learning about when there is a positive. Where were they? Where did they go? What, what did they do? How do we learn from that? How do we message to students to make sure that that doesn't happen again? Um, we've tried to do a lot about making sure that they're not all in the same car, they're not all going to dinner at the same restaurant. Uh, you know, how do you limit the number of students who are actually engaging either on the campus or off? And so it is a, it is a, a arduous process, but one that we do learn from, from every day. So, again, I don't want it to make me feel like it's just a single event.
Jeff, in the case of that, that scenario that you laid out, because you said that there were three or possibly four students that contracted it separately, and you laid out that example where, you know, just perhaps them leaving the campus and going and working in the community, shopping in the community, did your specific contract tracing find that that was the case, that those students? Because obviously, they're catching it then from somebody or something, and so that's, if it, if it's their activities in the community, you know, we need to be on top of that, and I just am not, not versed enough to know how that contract tracing laid out. But is, is this is, if the students are leaving the campus and spending the night or multiple nights at home, at, you know, 100, 200 miles away, wherever they're coming from, um, was that the case? Were they either?
Were they either? Yeah. I, I'm, I don't believe that I could, I could sit here and give the exact person X was at restaurant Y. Um, I don't, I don't think I could, I don't think we have that level of, of detail, or at least I do not. And, but I don't believe that there is anything that, that led us to conclude that something happened directly in North Andover, um, that would have led us to be concerned about that. And, and the contact tracing that we do, we do in partnership with the town of North Andover. So any of that, that level of detail that we would have would be shared with the town.
There's no evidence of any spread in this instance, based on the contact tracing. We deemed it a cluster because it was two or more people, not from the same household, which is what the definition of a cluster is, that contracted it from what the contract chasing says, from each other. Um, we have no evidence of any community spread linked to the Monican cluster. So I haven't seen anything that links it to a restaurant, or a shop, or a workplace, or anything that would, is linkable in North Andover.
And I'm not saying, by the way, that they're spreading, I'm saying they contracted it in our community, in the community, right? Because then that means there's some other problem out there, where perhaps there's somebody spreading that isn't getting tested or, or is asymptomatic, so.
We didn't see any evidence of that. In fact, if you look back through the numbers, if I remember correctly, when the Monican cluster started, our numbers were very low. Um, so what was that, 928?
Yep.
Right? So our-
We were, we were in low green.
Right. Uh, we only had eight cases at that point, I believe.
So, Mr. Chair, which brings me to a few questions that I have. Welcome, Dr. Doggett. I don't know that we've met before, but thank you for, for coming. Um, probably unlike many people in this room, I have a long relationship with Merrimack College. I grew up down the street in, which a house is no more, but my cousins were the owners of the North Black Bank, and we owned the other brick house, so they were neighbors. And my dad went to Villanova, and at that time, Merrimack College was a brand-new school. He used to bring his books, textbooks from Villanova to Merrimack for the new students. And one of our wonderful residents, um, Mr. Breen, was your first signee to, um, Merrimack College. So we have a very good, long, wonderful relationship. Um, but I, I have to say, I'm, I'm really struggling, and I've made this point many times, that Monicon is not in North Andover. We were a low-green community, and yet we got charged with that and immediately were put into red. Today, I don't know if you received the alarming message. When I say alarming, I do mean alarm. The cell phones were buzzing, alarm, alarm, notifying us that we were in a, uh, community that is now red and somewhat dangerous. Uh, that came, I believe, from the state. Um, and it's very frustrating that we are being assigned this problem or concern when it's not even a part of our town. And businesses are hurting. They are absolutely hurting. I had a reason to visit many of the local restaurants because of, um, um, a mission of the North Andover Women's Club. We were buying gift certificates to give out to our COVID heroes. And I was chatting with them, and I said, how are you finding it? And they're saying that business is down, the red does not help. Um, I think some of our other local merchants were finding it slow. So my question to you, when you know that it is not something that occurred in North Andover, yet we are being unfairly penalized, when are you going to change how you count and count whatever is in Andover towards Andover? We are, we're, we were low green, now we are high red, but the community in which it really occurred in is low, is now enjoying at least a yellow status. We have our own concern, as you know, as, at the high school. But if, without Merrimack College, we would be a yellow community and- And I am asking you to do the right thing, the thing that Merrimack College should be doing. And have it assigned to the community of which it came.
Let's be clear about that first in terms of how we got there. And then certainly a conversation about the future is warranted, so that we can dispel any confusion. We were instructed by the DPH to assign all cases through our testing center to the address of Merrimack College. Which since 1950, is 315 Turnpike Street, North Andover. Simply that's how it happened. Testing center is on the campus, the address of the college is on the campus, and therefore we follow the DPH rules. In fairness, we didn't quite think we were going to be here. I don't think the board of selectmen or the town manager or anybody else thought about a map at the time, quite frankly. We were simply running a testing center, which is essential as part of our, our public health response. And the address provided was the address of the college.
Well, then we would like you to, we would like you to support us in, in having that changed and have it done the right way.
I, I just don't know what that means.
It's very clear, Andrew. You go to the state and say, one town is being erroneously charged and being affected by this. We have no jurisdiction. It's relatively simple. You go to the, to the state, because what I heard that came from the state, it did go by the address and that's what they went by. They went by what was sent to them. So there seems to be a little discrepancy. You very well could be right.
I appreciate that because I am right in the sense that the DPH asked for the address of the college. We provided it, was nothing more and nothing less.
So Andrew Flanagan and I are meeting with DPH on Wednesday. They were under the assumption that there was some kind of agreement between the towns regarding how we would do reporting, so.
How did that come about, that they understood that there was an agreement?
So I, I don't know. I don't, so we're going to meet on Wednesday to try to flush it out and see if we can find a, a better way to do it moving forward. Currently, when cases come through that, for instance, have a teacher who teaches in Salisbury or a student who commutes from Haverhill, right? We end up having to reassign those and maybe it's as simple as that. But it's a conversation that we're going to have, unfortunately, we're not able to have before this meeting. But we have many people from DPH meeting with us on Wednesday, which we're excited about. And I'm hoping that we'll see some clarity before the next map comes out on Thursday. Which is why they scheduled it before Thursday, because they wanted to be able to have the conversation with us about where we were going. So that's, I'm, I'm really hopeful that that's going to be helpful.
I certainly do too, because there is something very wrong with innocent people being harmed because of some bureaucracy. And it can be made right. The other thing, the question that I have is, so when the, the students came down with this, how are you assuring us that they are being properly quarantined and monitored? And where are they being housed?
The policy of the college is that every student within 200 miles goes home, isolation and quarantine. And to make sure that they do exactly that, we contact every student that's in isolation or quarantine, commuter or resident. We contact the staff, the faculty, the vendors, anybody who is positive, quite frankly. And we do regular check-ins through the process to make sure that they are well. Quite frankly, whether it's a college campus or not, we all realize if we're honest about it, the quarantine requires the individual, right? A level of responsibility. It's not lockdown for anybody who's, knows anybody who's been quarantined and not talking about the college in their own personal life. It requires personal responsibility. What we do during a 14-day period or a 10-day in isolation is contact the individuals on a regular basis, make sure they have the services they need. And make sure that they're complying as best we can determine. In, in the end, we're not putting vehicles outside of people's houses. We're not putting GPS units on faculty, staff and students. We're giving them the guidance, just like you would in North Andover, and we're asking them to comply.
And where are they being quarantined?
At their homes, if they live within 200 miles. If not, they're quarantined on campus.
They're all quarantined on campus, Merrimack College campus.
They're within 200 miles of the campus, they return home, otherwise they are in our housing.
They're in Merrimack College housing?
Yes.
The kids who came down with the virus, all of them?
No, if they're within 200 miles, they are.
No, no, the, no, the ones who are beyond the 200 miles.
Hold on, within 200 miles, in some cases even beyond, they go home.
I, I understand that part.
And the rest are quarantined in, in Merrimack housing.
Merrimack College housing on campus.
I, I think it might, it might be helpful to, to note that of the 2,100 students that live in Merrimack housing, there's, I think, like 11%, so just over 200 of them live outside of the 200-mile radius of the campus. So we're talking a very small number of students that are amongst our residents that don't go home should they need to isolate or quarantine.
Of the population that was tested positive, how many of them were in that 11%?
I want to say six or seven.
And where did they quarantine? On campus.
And do you know exactly where those were?
I don't, some would have been, some would have been Royal Crest, some would have been on the campus proper.
So some would have been in Royal Crest?
So some are at Royal Crest, correct?
Where families are also sharing common space?
We, we have students that live in Royal Crest. We have had students that lived in Royal Crest for years. Yep.
But when it comes.
Have you moved any of the students who need to be quarantined into Royal Crest?
I don't have the data in front of me, but I'm sure we have, yes.
That you have, they have been moved to Royal Crest to be quarantined?
I'm sure we have had, yes, I'm sure we have.
Okay. Again, I, I cannot just, I'm going to just continue to state this plainly. You need to treat this town with the due respect that it deserves and they should not be counted in a town where it didn't occur. And I am somewhat concerned that these kids are being quarantined at Royal Crest where there's elderly and family. I, it's, it's concerning.
So as far as just thinking about the freshman population, we had talked at our last meeting about the, about the flexibility of Merrimack with perhaps restricting how many of them have cars or eliminating cars entirely. And I don't know, I'm not, I, I haven't brushed up enough on the 60 pages. And I do appreciate, by the way, that that's listed online and that the public has access to it and was looking at it even before the Labor Day weekend. But what, um, what options are being considered, have already been considered perhaps that are different from that plan? To just keep those students on campus more, so that way they're not mixing and bringing back like what happened in Monakin. Jeff, you're on mute.
Thank, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay. So that, thank you very much. So last year, Merrimack College students had over 1,100 cars on the, either parking on the campus or we were renting spaces on, at the, I think it's the Elm Street parking garage. East Mill, excuse me, East Mill parking garage. So it was just over 1,100. This year, we cut that number more than half and, and told students that they had to, they could only have a car on the campus if they met the following criteria. One, they had a job that was off the campus that was required of them for the purposes of completing their academic coursework. Two, they had a job that was helping pay the bills. Or three, they had a family member that they had to attend to at home, sick grandparents, things like that, that they would have to do on a regular basis. Each one of those students had to apply. Each one of those students applied actually to Andy Mailer, who did the review. He and his office did the review. And as of, as of this fall, there were just under 55, I think there were 53 freshmen that actually had a car, which is significantly less than what we've had in years past.
All right.
Out of 1,100 freshmen.
Thank you.
Please understand in all those cases, people have families that they have to take care of and have other responsibilities. It's just not possible sometimes to say no.
I think, I think Jeff's explanation is completely reasonable. I mean, that's, I didn't know that that was the three criteria, and if that's in the document listed on the Merrimack website, I'm sorry for overlooking it.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one final question. So, um, we, I, I think the last time we met in person here, we heard there were either three or four citations that were written for kids or students that were in, not in compliance with COVID by our police department. Do you guys get notified of that? And if you do, how do you guys handle that once you're notified of a non-compliance that has been issued by the police department?
We have 15 more going out tomorrow, so I notified Mr. Mailer earlier today.
Okay, so you, we've got 15 more, which is a pretty large number, going out tomorrow. So how, what's, what's done with those notifications?
I'll answer the first question first, which is, which is, are we notified? The answer to that question is yes.
Okay.
We're either notified at the moment, that is to say, North Andover Police Department would receive a complaint. They notify us. We will also go over there and take all the information as well as North Andover Police. And then we adjudicate that in our system and I'll discuss what that means in a second. And then the second way is if we are not notified at that moment, then we are notified after the, after the fact. Which would be the case, as the town manager just described, where there was an incident at a location this weekend and, and there were 15 students, I believe, in a space and they've all been, been fine. In all of those cases, the fine from the town is the least of their concern. Our policies, again, whether they live in our housing or not, are pretty strict. They've all, they have all agreed to a code of conduct. They've all agreed to how they would act. So without, in a particular situation, if there is a group of students and they're underage and they're drinking, then, you know, they're going to face a series of consequences. If they're in our housing, that is units that we're renting and they're as part of our housing allotment, they could face being removed from housing for the semester, if not longer. And at this point in the semester, if that were to happen, that would be at a complete loss of their, of their, their room and board fee for the, for the semester. So an expense for the, the student could be, you know, significantly more than the, the fine that from the town. And it's our view, it's unfortunate that the town has to engage in that. I understand it and appreciate that it happens. I appreciate the North Andover Police Department going to do that. But from our perspective, the more that we are engaged and, and address that behavior, the better. We don't, we, we do everything we can to avoid there being a repeat and we do that by being tough at the beginning.
So how were they, so you're going to receive 15 notifications tomorrow? How were the past notifications handled?
So without, without knowing exactly what the, these 15 were, whether it was just noise. I know that there was some cir, there was a circumstance, at least at one point, where there were some students that were, that were fined, that were, that were in one of our housing units. I believe that they were, they were either intrinately suspended or suspended from housing for that, for the rest of that semester.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be if they're in violation of the COVID rules, they're removed from housing?
The, the situation. I think, if I could recall, I think one of those circumstances around one of the, the cases, they had about 20 people in a room. There was underage drinking and, and it just, there was a lot of inappropriate, you know, they weren't wearing masks. So they weren't following a number of, of our, our policies. So in those cases, I, yes, I believe that we intrinately suspended them from housing.
You know, Dr. Doggett, it's, um, these are difficult times and you, you have got a challenging population, to say the least. We were all there at one time. Some of us have children that have, you know, gone through it. It's not easy, we get that. But having said that, we expect a partnership with you and the college that we've enjoyed, as I said at the beginning, for years. But the college does have to do this responsibly and honestly. And, and not be putting our town in a negative light for no fault of our own. And we really expect that you to work with us, to set the record straight. Not only is it the right thing to do in North Andover, but it, it affects even the surrounding communities. Andover's got a yellow rating when in fact they're probably red. That's not fair to the people of Andover, not having full knowledge of what's going on. It's, but I'll tell you, today, getting that blaring alarm come through the phone and our people in our town getting those messages. And we're not really a red community. We're really not. And not having jurisdiction, not having authority, but getting all the bad stuff.
Can I, point of clarification, the town manager, are, would we not in fact still be a red community, given the recent spike of?
We would not.
We would not, we would be yellow.
The numbers only go from Saturday to Saturday. Our cases at North Andover High School, which at this point I believe is five confirmed, wouldn't have come on until Monday, when they came through the Maven system. So next week could be different, right? When it comes out Thursday, it could be different. But of the 40 cases that we had over this last two-week period, 14 of them were Merrimack, which would have put us at 28, which would have put us at yellow.
So the yellow category is determined by the state.
Yes.
We have the Commonwealth, and you mentioned earlier that we have teachers, for instance, that may be working here, but their positive counts may count towards the community they're home in and that the state has shown flexibility as well. Our legislative delegation has been working to try to get the state to also recognize that change. I appreciate, I actually do appreciate the beating that you gentlemen are going through right now. And I hope that you continue to work with our town manager, as well as the town manager from Andover, because it isn't fair. I mean, I know we were talking before about restaurants. Restaurants weren't delayed with opening, whereas we did identify 43 businesses that actually did have their services in a tangible way limited because of the phased reopening. And so I, again, I, I appreciate the beating, just as much as a beating though deserves to be aimed at the state. We have a governor that has no problem coming here to campaign against PTO moms when they're running for school committee or the board of selectmen. And this governor can still work with us right now to have the town of North Andover's businesses open phased reopenings at least at an appropriate level. And it's unfortunate that they're not willing to work with us. We're now three weeks, two weeks or three weeks into letters being sent and requests being made. I know that those letters initially went, what, a week without being acknowledged? And then finally we were told, no, there's not going to be any movement. So I think that we need to continue to work with Boston to make sure that that movement happens. Because yes, I think that you as a school need to act responsibly. And I really hope that you are, I think that you depend on that. That's a free market right there, because if you don't act responsibly, your student population isn't coming back, right? But right now, this is an arbitrary designation that's being applied to us by Boston. And so I hope that everybody continues to act safely. I hope that you continue to work with our town managers. But let's be clear, this isn't Merrimack's designation, this is the state's designation and they know exactly where these students live. And we've just made it crystal clear on TV for, what, the 18th time? So I just, Merrimack doesn't get to pick at the end of the day if we are a red community or if Andover's a red community. Right now, there's somebody in Boston who has, and I don't know who actually that person is, but.
That's not exactly what I heard, but they also could advocate for doing the right thing. Because not only does it affect our reputation, it affects yours when we're being assigned for the cases that are occurring in another community. I think we all need to deal with honesty.
Who's doing the assigning? Gentlemen, you're, I'm mute.
I'm mute. If I can comment, if it'll be okay, Mr. Chair. We're not working against them and I appreciate the comments by both the board of selectmen and all the selectmen. We're presenting our data, we're not hiding, hiding our data. Our process of surveillance testing is the model that is embraced by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from the governor's office. Which I think may help in the competition. If you want higher education, they want more, and so maybe the way we're, the curvification in the governor's office and everybody else is the right way may help in the competition. If you want higher education to test and test regularly, then you need to understand that with that comes more positives than when you don't. So we're, we are not in any way opposing what your comments are. That's why we present our data in the form of a dashboard on a weekly day basis. The state is aware of our data, the town is aware of our data, so we're not trying to hide it. Someone has made the decision as it relates to having a map and what the map means. That was not, that's a playing field we didn't define in fairness. So I hope you know that, as, as Mr. Cal Giro, Ms. Medley identified, we're trying to do the right thing. I think we are working hard to do exactly that. And in the end, the region is impacted by what's going on. by what's going on. One community shouldn't be impacted solely.
And we agree with that.
And if I could just add to that point, as Andrew had mentioned in the introduction, I am a resident of North Andover. I do have a kid in the public schools. I do work at a business, I don't know if Merrimack is considered one of the 43, but I assure you, having our address in a town that is red does impact Merrimack College and does limit some of the things that we could do. In some cases, I believe some of the things that we could do that would help mitigate COVID spread, because we can only keep our students at very small numbers outside, all right? So it does impact me personally, it does impact the institution broadly, you know, and so I don't want this to ever be the case where it's perceived that Merrimack is doing something that is somehow in its best interest and not in the town's, because in this particular case, I agree with Andrew, if the state showed up tomorrow and told us to do it a different way, we would obviously comply with that. We've done everything we can to have our numbers be as open and transparent as possible. It is the situation that we find ourselves in, and yes, I do deeply understand the impact that it has on the day-to-day basis of folks in North Andover. And I would say, just as we would appreciate and understand the difficulties, if there were ever a situation where it was Merrimack who was impacted by something that happens in North Andover, we are all in this together, and if there's a better solution to it, and the state's willing to hear that out, we're more than happy to adjust.
I think that, I think I've made this point, but I'll make it again. You know, Mr. Mailer used the word, you know, "this is alarming." Well, I got to be honest, to the local businesses, it's alarming. They are feeling it, they are feeling the red zone, and we just want your help and cooperation of setting the record straight. I don't think that's too much to ask, and keep impressing it upon the state that this, it's not fair to innocent people, innocent businesses. And as I said from the beginning, we've always enjoyed a great working relationship, and I know that we will continue to have a great working relationship. This is a bad bump in the road, and we're asking for your cooperation and help in addressing this. You know, maybe in a few months? Hopefully not, but the outbreaks will all be on the North Andover side, and we'll have to accept that. But what's happening to the merchants isn't right, and I'm getting phone calls, I spoke to some of the people, and they're frustrated. So I'm just asking that Merrimack College continue to do the right thing and make sure the numbers are being reported according to the town, and asking you to work with the state in order to do that. And Phil is right, our legislators have been on this. I've talked to several of them, and they're also concerned and very frustrated. And I don't think it's too much to ask that you work with us to get the numbers assigned appropriately. You know, if they were, you might find that two communities, excuse me, would be yellow. I don't know that to be a fact, but North Andover could be yellow, and Andover could be yellow, versus us being red, and it's not even accurate. So, again, it took great courage coming here, and I thank you for that. I'm sure you knew that this was not going to be a pleasant conversation, and what we've heard from our town manager is that, you know, people are working together, trying to get it sorted out, but I think there's still some more work to be done. And I'm speaking for the residents, and particularly for the businesses, they're feeling it, and it makes sense.
Any other...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have one more question. And this is really just lessons learned, I think, at our last meeting. Brian said that 90% of your cases with the outbreak were freshmen, and we know that that's a challenging group, and they were cooped up this summer, and I'm sure it was, they were thrilled to be at college. How does your messaging change to that particular group? I mean, you've got 18-year-olds now, right? They're getting their first sense of freedom, and we all remember it well, and in the middle of a pandemic, I'm sure that's difficult. So how do you guys change that messaging to that particular group? Because I think your seniors kind of were out of, you know, there was a small percentage of seniors.
Yeah, it's actually a very great point that I appreciate you raising it of, I don't mean to sound sarcastic when I say this or to be tongue-in-cheek, but everyone that lived in Monakin was a freshman, and I don't think there's been a better message to freshmen than "you're going to go home." Because whether they actually tested positive or they quarantined, there were a number of students who were not identified through the contact tracing, but were sent home just the same, right? And so that alone has definitely changed the activity of freshmen on the campus, probably more than anything else could have. Because you're right, you come in as a freshman, you don't actually understand the full breadth and scope of what it means to be a student at college, but I think that that had an enormous impact on how they act and how they go about their day. In addition to that, to your point, there is specific messaging that goes to freshmen. We are trying to do more events with them and try to find more ways to keep them engaged on the campus, different than what we would do with an upperclassman.
And are they all back? Are they all back now, right? The ones that got...
Everyone is back, yes.
Is Monica, is that the only on-campus dorm that has students who've come down with the COVID or tested positive? Or is there other dorms on campus?
There are many other buildings on the campus, and there are other buildings on the campus that have had positives.
So not, I mean, I was asking dorms in particular?
The dorms in which there are positives. Yep.
We haven't seen anything else to the same degree.
Right. Could you say that again, please?
We haven't seen anything else that's to that same degree, where we had 80, 60, 70, 80 cases coming out of one building, right? They've been more scattered.
Well, I think, you know, we covered a lot of ground here, got a lot of perspective, and, you know, I'm really proud of my select board members here, because we came together a couple of weeks ago, and with Melissa's help, really put the message out that this needed to be looked at in a fair and equitable way. It took a couple of weeks to get an initial response. It wasn't what we wanted, but I think we've got some traction, and I think the discussion here tonight, as I clarified, a number of things. We understand more your policy going forward, and I can say, maybe I've got a little added perspective as having a son that's looking at colleges this month, traveling to campuses in the Northeast, schools about a comparable size, so I've had the opportunity to sample about a half a dozen policies and procedures in campuses that are comparable. And I have to say, the scope of what Merrimack laid out in their handbook is tremendous. What I hear over and over is, what we learned is so important, and that was the big variation that I found in actually visiting these campuses, is what they put into action afterwards and the level of communication with the community. And it really went from where it was totally transparent to where literally you had the dean leave the school, because he said, "I did a terrible job." So there is a track record here that now we can work with. And the one thing that I do, that also stands out to me is, if you look at the number of cases, and you said, "Okay, here was our policy, we implemented it on the first of October," you look at the number of cases, you look at the impact in the town, it was contained. And that's what we expect going forward, number one. Number two, but just as important, is we want to minimize the possibility of this happening. And I think where I'm really expected that Melissa, along with Andrew, and Andrew Finnegan in Andover, and working with you at Merrimack, to really push this over the finish line now. We really need to make the statement, we've got everybody aboard, but now's the time, I think, the message is out there. We look to see that this is implemented continually going forward, what you've learned from this. So Melissa, I know you're going to give us an update for the town after this. I would say to you, Jeff, and Andrew, thank you, you know, for your time. We hold you in high expectation of following through on this, and we also will give you this comparable back, which is, we share our resources where we can, and I think we have, and we appreciate Merrimack recognizing that in both directions. If there's no other comments or follow-up from the board, I'll say thank you again to Merrimack for stepping up, and I'll wish you good luck and good health to the campus and all. Good night.
Thank you.
Melissa, can you kind of step us...
Yeah, I'll give you a quick COVID update. Try to make it quick. Brian had something else tonight, so I was on the hook. So today, we did a quick update today, and we have 46 active cases, and of those 46, 13 are related to Merrimack. As you know, because we all got it, there was an alert put out by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts today for the wireless emergency alert. It was between 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, but I think most people got it around 5:15. Just reminding us that COVID-19 is a serious threat in North Andover, and to remember to wear a mask and be socially distanced. I don't know about you guys, but I also got Methuen and Lawrence's, so it appears that they hit our whole region today. It was a little alarming, you know, have your phone buzzed that many times, but we did do it. On Thursday, there was a new community-level data map that was released by the state. We were red, as we figured we would be, but we were red with an asterisk, and that red with an asterisk means that there's more than 10 cases and more than 30% of the total cases originated from higher education. So there had to be two things, 10 cases coming from higher education, and those 10 cases had to be more than 30% of our cases in order to get that red asterisk. So without the college cases, we would have been yellow. Out of the 40 cases reported in the COVID map, 14 were related to higher education, and I don't want to make anyone upset, but six of those were actually located in Andover. So, you know, that's something that we're poring through and that we'll continue to kind of run with. Of that, just so you know how the mapping works, if we have five to 16 cases, we're considered green. 17 of 33 would be yellow, and 34 and above is red, okay? Hockey has been shut down for the next two weeks due to the spread from hockey. One of the things that we heard from the epidemiologist during our mayor manager's call is that what they're finding is that in cold weather, the droplets are not evaporizing as quickly, and so that's why they think the hockey is a problem, but it's an alarming thing to think about as we're coming to the winter, and something to remember. As everyone knows, due to a cluster at the high school, the school is remote, just the high school is remote until November 6th, there's no after-school activities or sports. Superintendent Gilligan, Director LaGrasse, and I did go on in North Andover Cam last week to remind people that this is not the time to let our guard down, this is the time, if anything, to put our guard up, because we are seeing numbers that are increasing. And off of that, I know Dick loves data, so today, I put together this chart, because, you know, it's one thing to look at the numbers every, you know, four days when I send it out, but it's another thing to look at it when you're here. And I found, when I, after I did it, I was maybe more alarmed than I was when I started it, because you can see, so what I base this on, because the only time that I compartmentalize the Merrimack numbers is when I do my bi-weekly or weekly, depending on when I do them, alerts. What you can see here is that, you know, obviously, there was a huge higher education issue, right, around the end of September, beginning of October, but they contained that cluster, and it went down rather dramatically, right? And you can see that they've kind of held straight the last three weeks. They have had 12 cases, 13 cases, 13 cases. What's alarming is our line, right? And so we were back where they were, right? And we were doing a really good job in September, and now, all of a sudden, we've really started to see a peak over the last two-week period, where today, we have 33 compared to just seven on September 28th, a month ago. And so this is just my reminder to people, you know, and I said this on cam, I know it's hard, and I know everybody wants to be normal, right? I know I want to be normal, but this isn't normal, and so we have to continue to remember that. And I'll continue to update this chart over our next couple of meetings, so you have it, too, because I think it says a lot.
How many of those 33 can be attributed to that super-spreading event that happened in the high school?
The high school, so right now, the high school has five confirmed, five confirmed, as of yesterday, when these numbers were pulled. So yeah, right now, they have five confirmed. Will there be more there could, over the next couple of days? Maven, the system is really a little bit behind, right? So by the time those tests come in, sometimes we have rumors of people being positive before they come through on the systems, so we're often already working with them. But I only work with the confirmed positive tests in these charts.
But it would be interesting to see that 33, where they trace back to, you know, how they hit, where they came from, where they all from spawning off that one event.
So some of them certainly will be. Other of them are related to sports. Hockey has been a big issue for this town, I will say, so. And other, other, you said sports, some of them are family clusters, where a parent gets it, and then it goes through the family, and so we might see four people just from that pretty easily. So that, those are kind of what we're seeing through our contract tracing.
So can I just say that that letter that was sent out by yourself, self-Brian and Dr. Gilligan, I appreciate the tone of that. I think that that, you know, it caught people's attention, and I think did perhaps cause a pause among a big chunk of people in this town, as they realized, you know, this really is having an impact. I mean, I think that the context of it was, of course, the schools, but it's a good reminder to our business community that, you know, behavior like that prevents us from being able to open more as businesses, and especially as we're going in this type of direction. You know, I think that they can help be messengers as much as you and using the town and the school email system can be, because those are their livelihoods, and a lot of them live in this community. And so in order for them to continue to move in that direction, where we can continue that phased approach to reopening, can't do that if people are acting irresponsibly.
We're all impacting each other right now, right? So Director LaGrasse and I were talking about this earlier, that, you know, this weekend, I didn't go anywhere, but, you know, the person sitting next to me might have went out to dinner and then to a party at someone's house, and I'm sitting next to them, now I basically went out to dinner and to a party at someone's house, right? And so that personal responsibility and that respect is so important right now, and, you know, it's a really hard balance, but if we don't get it right, it's going to be a cold, long winter in the house.
And even worse, though, for those business owners, right? Who can't, I mean, there isn't aid out there right now in a substantial way to help those businesses that aren't able to open as much as they need to or could if we were not a red community, and so just keep that in mind. Those are your neighbors, I mean, let's pretend that we can't imagine what's happening from a health perspective. I mean, we can certainly see the economic impact, and so by being more responsible, we're helping those business owners, our neighbors.
In so many ways, everybody's lives and health are affected, because the stress level of losing your business and maybe your home, because your business is not performing, we all can understand that the depression, the anger, the frustration, you know, can cause family problems, so forth and so on. People just don't realize that someone has worked their whole life for a business and watch it whittling away. I'm certainly not going to list businesses, not that I have any frankly, in North Andover, but there's a few local businesses outside of North Andover that are closing, shockingly closing. And we just don't want it to happen in our town, we don't want it to happen anywhere. But it's not just the money aspect, it is, sometimes people's whole sense of self-worth is their business and all they've accomplished, and trying to keep it going is, you know, it's truly upsetting, and then the impact it has on their children, and, you know, you're right, we all have to step it up and follow the rules the best we can. And just as I hope I got my message across this evening, and we need to all be honest with one another, honest with our reporting, honestly working together, and understand that these decisions can truly, as you just said, Phil, hurt people really bad. And I think that's why I was somewhat animated and upset about what's going on. I'm really frustrated that we're being classified as a red community when we're not.
But we're trending, the thing is, we can, it takes so little to move the dial now, and that's, I think that's really the message that we want to get to, to all our residents and all the businesses, which is individual accountability, to Dick's kind of question earlier, it doesn't take much, all it takes is a couple of clusters, whether that be a family, a school event, you know, whatever. whether that be a family, a school event, you know, whatever. All it takes is a couple of clusters and bang, we're up there, you know? And that responsibility is here. That piece we can control, right?
And we have to accept.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I think we've done a, done a really good job. And I'm with Phil. The communication that we're putting out, I think, needs to be continuous. I think people want it. I think this sort of thing, by the way, is as powerful as anything I've seen this in the past couple of weeks. It really is. And that's the thing, you know, the message is the same, but how it's delivered can change a little bit. I'm sorry, you were?
Oh, no, I was just kind of, what you were saying, that the communication, and I think that you and Dr. Gilligan acted quickly. The email was pointed. It came out quickly. The cam, I mean, it got people's attention, and people were talking about it. And I think that it impacted people, and I think that that's so important.
All right, well, we will see what Wednesday and Thursday bring us and
I'm good for us.
Bring your rabbit's foot with you.
I might.
All right, there you go. There you go. Revenue and Fixed Budget Committee report, sort of following up. So where does this impact us as a community? You put together a good letter from Lynn, and again, condolences to
So I'm Lynn tonight, too. I'm Brian. I'm Lynn. This is scary. Okay, so things actually look good, which is great news. We're, and I mean that in a very positive way. So for the budget status, things are where they should be. And we'll talk a little bit about the revenues in a minute, but you know, and I'll run through them in this part as well. Our property tax revenue is actually exactly where it was last year. Motor vehicle tax is up a little bit from where we were last year. Our mail tax is down, which is to be expected, right? And I think we may see a decrease again. I think we saw an uptick over the summer with outdoor dining, and now I think we'll probably see a decrease again, although maybe takeout wasn't down as much as we expected. Ambulances have helped strong. Our inspection, inspections are down by about five percent from last year, but we expect that those will come back up again as we start, you know, for, we, we weren't doing as many inspectional services-type things during COVID. We weren't really going to people's homes as much. A lot of things are kind of quieted down, but that's coming back up. Investment income is down a little bit, but we expect that we'll meet the budget. And local receipts are in line as well. And so we're, we're pretty psyched at these numbers. We reviewed them in really greater detail with the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee last week. And, you know, we were really glad we did the MOU because it gave us the protection that we need, and it laid out the safeguards in case things really went awry. But at this point in the year, we're really looking great. All of our expenses are running at approximately twenty-seven point fourteen percent, which is right where it should be for this time of the fiscal year. Water collections are down a little bit, and so are sewer collections, but usually those pick up, and it's not unusual for them to be lower now, and we'll see things kind of high up. Stevens Estate collections are at twelve point four percent, which is significantly down from where we were last year, but is not really to be surprising. They have really flexed a lot of what they're doing. We've been doing bereavement mails, which is new for us. We have the Halloween dinner coming up, but we're selling tickets for now. I think one of the seating is actually sold out. So doing our best and trying to at least make payroll there and maintain what we can. We had enough bookings to pay for the tent, you know, so it was one of those things, we put the tent up, do we not put the tent up? And it's chicken and egg kind of thing, right? But we ended up being able to pay for the tent through our bookings. And so Joanna has been really creative in trying to get things done there. So all in all, things look pretty good for the budget this year. So we're feeling good.
That's amazingly good, considering all that's going on.
Yeah, we're happy. So that's that one. And then, do you want me to do Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee, too?
Yeah.
Okay, and so for the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee, we met last week, and we reviewed all of our revenues for the year, where we were, and everything is in line, as I said. So what we ended up doing was the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee did vote to say that they do recommend that we move forward with all the new initiatives. And so you'll see that we have started to do that. The fire lieutenant's promotions are going to be going through at the end of this week. Some things will be pivoting, like, you know, the schools, as Jim Mealy and Dr. Gilligan and I talked about that a little bit, how some needs, especially not so much on our end, but on their end, have changed. And they've had to flex a little bit on what they're doing. But we're excited to see that things are where they are supposed to be, and that we can move forward on things like the new home person and the part-time person at youth, at the youth center, which they certainly need right now. And so we're excited to be where we are right now.
Excellent, excellent. And so everything's staying on schedule? You don't see any, any real changes going ahead for collections for expenses at this point?
The only thing that's going to be coming up is that the CARES Act money expires December 31st. So we have a second filing, which we've done. The next filing is due October 31st. And there's another filing that's like every fifteen days until December 31st comes through. We can keep putting more expenses on. What happens is, we put all the $2.7 million we spent at all. We put all the expenses forward, and then the CARES Act sends it back. It says, actually, $400,000 of this is FEMA reimbursable, send it to FEMA. And then that frees up more CARES Act money. So we're playing this, we've been playing hands this back and forth with them. And so that happened again, and so we have another filing to do. And we'll keep doing that until we spend all of the money. And then after December 31st, unless the Fed, real government, votes to extend the deadline or do a supplementary budget, which there's been rumors about, but who knows what will actually happen, then we would pivot to other funds. So there is a small grouping of educational funds that came from the state that are not expiring on December 31st. So the schools have been kind of holding as much of that as they can so they could pivot to that. Then the plan would be to follow the MOU, right? We'd start with the finance reserve account. We'd go to free cash after that, and then stabilization. But we have been able to do really good estimates, especially a PPE, thanks to D. And we're hoping that we've covered as much of the cost as we possibly can. So it's good news.
We'll take that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take that.
It'll be interesting to see what the budget looks like for next year, and how things have changed and what the new priorities are, because I think it certainly is going to be just a different process and a different budget than, than we've seen in the past, because I don't think anyone thinks that COVID is going to be magically going away on June 30th, unfortunately, so.
And that's going to be probably the next sixty days or so, we'll really start talking about that.
This week. Send out a budget request next week, the night, so it'll, comes fast.
Yeah.
So that's it on that.
Any questions from the rest of the board here? Well, let's move our friends who are looking to give us an update at Royal Crest, so.
So I'll start with that, and then I'll lean on Gene to give us the details, and Andrew. So we met last Thursday, October 16th, up at the Stevens Estate under the tent, and discussed the current zoning of the location and, you know, what, you know, we felt we could do with that location. So we're really trying to get ahead of the zoning on it to propose something to the developers so we can, you know, have the best interest of the town in mind. So we met, kind of started just really starting, understanding the site and what's available, and what, you know, what other, what other overlay districts have done, like in Sudbury and Salisbury, what we've done up here at Osgood Landing, and just try to understand what the, you know, the art of the possible is. So we're going to meet every two weeks. I don't know, I guess the tent is gone now, so we're not going to be meeting under the tent anymore, which is, I told you, it was like the best meeting I've had all day was under that tent. I'm in my basement. But, so it was a good, it was a good productive meeting, I think. And, you know, it's going to, we're going to meet every two weeks, so I think we're meeting this week as a follow-up. But again, I'm going to lean on Gene and Andrew to provide you more of the technical details for that. But I think, you know, we started, you know, it was a good first meeting, and, you know, really trying to understand the site and what's possible up there.
Great, excellent.
Andrew, would you like to go in?
Sure, thank you. I think that Swetman, Ballen Court covered most of it. I'll just add quickly that we have been continually in contact with the developer Trinity as well. We've been having bi-weekly meetings with them over this meeting format, a remote meeting format. We've had myself, Gene, Melissa, Suzanne Egan, and their whole development team in contact pretty consistently, going through the finer points of their proposal and getting a better understanding of what their process is going to be. As far as zoning goes, to Swetman, Ballen Court's point, we were looking at a zoning proposal, or excuse me, a zoning overlay in Sudbury, in Salisbury. I've also been looking at a traditional neighborhood development overlay that the state put out, kind of a model bylaw. So we're going to be pulling the best points from that. We're going to be using our, also our 40-yard district, or former 40-yard district, some of that language as a sort of a base for the zoning, and we'll work from that. So I'm hoping to be able to show something to the, this zoning subcommittee this week, so we can further refine it. So we're very excited about that. And I think that's all from me. I'll go ahead and pass it off to Gene. He'll tell you a little bit about what's been progressing as far as conversations with the planning board go.
Yeah, so I agree. We have a really good framework, I think, for zoning options in terms of moving forward with a, I call it kind of a hybrid approach, where some things may be allowed by plan review versus special permit. For those that are familiar with zoning, so plan review would require a review by the planner board, but not necessarily meeting the criteria for a special permit, which is more discretionary. That being said, the planner board right now, they've added a meeting for November 5th to continue to review what is being presented as the conceptual plan. And they're really trying to put their arms around the dimensional requirements, the height, the fill, the density. And so it's really trying to dig into what they're proposing in terms of the impact of the existing development versus the proposed development. And based on that review is really how the zoning is going to be developed. And so once the planner board gets comfortable with what's being proposed, the zoning really can, can come into play. And I think we have consensus in terms of the plan, in terms of that hybrid approach that I've mentioned. But we really need to get our arms around what's being proposed in terms of density and scale of the development. And I think the planner board is really anxious to get their arms around what they're proposing and comparable-type developments that exist today, and that's what they've requested from the developer.
In-house, we've been working on, so they've already started their fiscal analysis, the developer has. And we've been working on meeting with them, starting to pull our own data, so make sure that we have data, that we don't want to end up later with a fighting between the experts when we go to do the pay review. So making sure that we have data, making sure they're doing comps that we think are legitimate comps for, you know, the different elements of this, which, this is very multifaceted and kind of, I don't want to say strange, but, you know, a lot of different types of uses kind of mixed together. So there's not a lot of things to look at, which we've learned, that are perfect comps, right? So we're working on that now internally as well. So the staff is kind of activated on pulling those numbers together and better understanding what is population-sensitive within their budgets and how they'll be impacted by any development like this. So that's been really interesting, kind of interesting part of what we're doing on top of these bi-weekly meetings that we've been having with Royal Crest, so.
And of course, timing is an issue, too, right? So, you know, trying to look to, are we going to try to get something on the, on the warrant for this year's town meeting or this year's coming uptown meeting or not? So that's all, has to play into it, so it becomes a bit critical. Believe it or not, we're getting close to crunch time now for getting the warrant set, if we're looking for any kind of zoning changes for this coming fiscal year.
Be busy for months.
Yep.
One thing that I sort of, you know, as I look at the scope of this project, and must be part of your conversation, is just what the sequencing is of, of the components of this could very much impact a whole bunch of choices, not, not just in terms of revenue, but sort of what we have to do, the amount of work and so forth. So, you know, that's, that's a piece that I think is also, I think would be good to understand a little bit more of that, too.
So they have given us a phasing plan, but I think it's still preliminary. Are you, Gene and Andrew?
Yes, so they're talking about a seven to ten-year build-out plan. And we, we don't have that in writing yet in terms of the phasing of it, but they've indicated the dorms would come very early in that stage for Merrimack Village, and the affordable housing component would come early. But we need to lay out sequentially how the build-out would occur.
And that's something we're continuing to push on in our bi-weekly meetings as we're trying to get information. But I think they're also in a formative part of their planning, so, you know, it's, we're learning together. But we're doing our best.
I think that helps just, you know, you know, if we're targeting towards a town meeting, the more we can understand that, as we know with large-scale projects, those sort of questions ring heavy, so.
No surprises.
Dick, anything else you, or Laura, anything else you?
For me.
Yeah? All right, well, that's great. Well, and I have to say, just as a, as a quick pitch for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, again, driven a lot by Andrew and Gene, really appreciate your help because we see this as, the Royal Crest is an opportunity to kind of link that up to reality, the actual implementation. So I think you'll see that in our next meeting in our report, how we're going to try and sync up with that, too, hopefully to help a little bit. All right, thanks again. Gene, Andrew?
Thank you.
All right, you guys.
Mr. Schreiber, I believe we have two people on the line for Item G and New Business?
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate to take that out of order?
That would be fine. Let's do that.
Jim might have walked away from his computer. I can't tell, but I believe it's Jim and Adam.
Yeah, Jim's been here for the long haul, pretty much, poor guy.
Mr. Hamel, am I correct? Are you here for the cemetery?
No, I am the, the former chair of the Board of Trustees of North Parish.
Right, so you're at the burial ground, correct?
That's right, yep.
Okay. So I believe that Jim and, Jim and Adam are both here for that item.
That's right, yep.
I'd be happy if you want to proceed and take us through what you've put in front of us here.
Certainly. So thank you, Board, for, for taking some time to listen to me today. As you know, so as I mentioned, you know, my name is Adam Hamel, and I'm the former Chair of the Board of Trustees of North Parish. And North Parish has been the steward of the second burying ground on Academy Road since it was established in 1817. Up until, you know, maybe about the 1980s or so, the parish had a very, from what I understand, large, involved, active cemetery committee that was in charge of taking care of the care and maintenance of the, of the, of that property. Over time, the, that group sort of dwindled quite a bit, and we're in a position now where all of the sort of care and maintenance of the burying ground really falls on the shoulders of basically two volunteers within, within the church. And really, you know, for the most part, the, the capacity of us to take care of the, of the burying ground really is almost pretty much limited to taking care of lawn mowing. We have, in the past several years, applied for and received some CPA grant money to do some removal of some invasive vegetation, and also to do some, some work on preservation of headstones. That project, the most current project, is slated to be finished. If it didn't finish this summer, it's, the work is quite nearly done. But other than that CPA-funded grants, like I said, the, the ability of the church to care for the property is pretty limited. And as we're looking into the future, you know, it's really not sustainable for North Parish to continue to support and maintain that property. And, you know, the primary reasons for that relate to just simply, you know, we don't have the sufficient, you know, interested and able volunteers to do it. The drain on our resources to really, you know, to spend the money to take care of it properly, we really don't have that. And then quite frankly, I mean, it's, you know, as important as the second burying ground is to the history of North Parish and to North Andover, you know, caring for and being a steward of a historic burial ground is really not part of the core mission of North Parish. So we were approached, now it's probably been maybe a year or two ago, we were approached by Ridgewood Cemetery Association about their interest in assuming responsibility of the second burying ground. There's, you know, a lot of things that Ridgewood has going in its favor for, for doing that. I mean, they have got, you know, the, the staff, the equipment, the know-how to care for a historic cemetery, because of course, you know, they're the stewards of the Ridgewood Cemetery, which was founded in the 1850s or so. And so it's, it's part of their core mission, unlike North Parish, to care for a cemetery. So what we're doing and why we're in front of you tonight is that on November 5th, North Parish is scheduled to have a congregational meeting. Parish is scheduled to have a congregational meeting, and at that meeting, the Board of Trustees is planning on asking for the congregation to vote to approve a transfer of North Parish's ownership interest in the second burying ground to Ridgewood. And, you know, as we, you know, have been considering this, looking into this, you know, we did a title search of the second burying ground, and there's some interesting, historically interesting title history there. And one of those is that the original grant of the deed from the Stevens family in that, of the second burying ground, says that it was, the deed says that it was, that the property was given to the inhabitants of the North Parish in Andover. And sort of, you know, as sort of an academic point of view, there potentially is, or could be, a claim made by the town of North Andover that that reference, you know, of, you know, deed to the inhabitants of the North Parish in Andover, as it stood in 1817, was not necessarily referring to the church, you know, North Parish as it stands now, but rather to the people who resided in that geographic area. So, like I said, you know, even though North Parish, the church, has been maintaining this property, you know, for, you know, over 200 years, like I said, there's at least conceivably a claim to be made by the town that there's an ownership interest by the town. We, as, you know, North Parish, and, you know, Jim could speak on behalf of Ridgewood if necessary, but North Parish does not have, you know, the interest in trying to sort of clear any title issues that may occur. Rather, you know, if the congregation votes in favor of this measure on November 8th, what we are envisioning would happen is that North Parish would give what's called a release deed to North Parish. And what that does is basically, we would be giving to Ridgewood whatever interest it is that North Parish has in the second burying ground, without making any representations as to, you know, what that title is. So, you know, to the extent that the town of North Andover has any claim to ownership interest in that property, what North Parish would be doing by giving this release deed to Ridgewood would, from my understanding, not have any effect or impact on any sort of future claim that the town may, if they ever wanted to, you know, make to ownership of the property. So again, you know, my purpose of coming here before you tonight is really mostly to inform you of what it is that North Parish is considering doing, and then, you know, we're not asking for any action on the part of the town, other than, you know, if there was a sense among the town leadership that, you know, that there was an objection to what it is that North Parish is doing, if there was some desire on the part of the town to, you know, step in and take over stewardship, ownership of the second burying ground in the same way that the town took over ownership of the first burying ground, I think it was like in the 1950s that that happened. You know, we would love to know that and sort of hear about that, but other than that, you know, like I said, you know, my role being here tonight is really sort of more as, you know, informative and just to sort of tell you what it is that's going on. So I've said a lot, so if you have any questions or if there's points that I could clarify, I'm glad to do that.
So Town Council did say that we don't need to take any action on this. I know it does say vote on the agenda, that this is really more informational, since we don't know if we have an interest or not, but that it should be recorded that we may, so.
As I think many of us in the room know, and attorney, is that North Andover does not have a cemetery. Each community needs to have its own cemetery, so we have an arrangement with Ridgewood. So would that now include this cemetery as well, or just, is it sort of a moot point?
I do not know that. I haven't seen the arrangement that we have with Ridgewood. Probably just hasn't come up yet in my followings, but I can certainly look into that. Jim may be able to explain more on what Ridgewood's intent is.
Were you aware that each community needs to have a part, some sort of a relationship with the cemetery? Well, there's Jim LaFon, he probably is aware of that. So does that mean that this would also be part of that Ridgewood parcel? I don't even know if it really makes a difference.
Yeah. Jim LaFon, 329 Osgood Street. We really don't know right now. I mean, basically, the conversation goes back even further than a few years ago. Someone approached us maybe three or four years ago, asking, would we be interested in help taking care of the second burying ground? And at the time, we said no. I was the president of the Ridgewood Board at the time. I just thought it was too much on our plate with a lot of the restoration that we were doing. But then, as I started, you know, walking the old center, I lived pretty nearby, and seeing that obviously the North Parish needed a little bit of help with it, other members of the committee got more involved, and we said, you know, this is just good community outreach. We are cemetery. We have lawn mowers, weed whackers, blowers, we know how to take care of turf, we know how to take care of trees and shrubbery, we've got a full-time staff, we've got, you know, clerical help, office help, we've got a pretty vibrant board. So we actually got back involved with the conversation, myself and Adam in particular, when we were still both presidents of our respective boards, now we're not. But I think I finally convinced the Ridgewood Board, or maybe they convinced me, that this is just good for Ridgewood to do for North Andover. We don't see any asset. We, you know, we could never sell it. We could, we're not, I don't think that there's any burial ground there left, although Adam and I have talked about that. If someone with legal rights to, you know, a family that had a family plot there came forward and said, we have legal rights to be buried here, and we have someone that needs to be buried, you know, we'd certainly have to look into that. But we don't have any, anything other than restoring the second burying ground, taking care of it, hopefully getting more people in there to take tours and to spend time there. That's really, that's the only, that's our only motive at this point in time.
I think it's all good, but I am a little amused, a few days before Halloween, we're talking about cemeteries and burial grounds. I don't know if this was just by accident, but it is kind of interesting. No.
Well, it was supposed to be last week, remember?
Yeah.
There you go.
It all sounds like a good, good community action here, and...
They do a great job at Ridgewood.
It's just working on the technicalities here.
They really do.
I appreciate it. Well, thank you for stepping forward, Jim, and trying to make this work for our whole community.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a great project if it comes to fruition, and, you know, at Ridgewood, our thought process is that, heck, if two, three, five years down the road, someone comes forward and says, we want to be the ones to spend our money and take care of it, well, we have nothing to lose. Go ahead, go for it.
There you go. All good. Well, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much.
Good night, now. All right. That's good.
Oh, Brian's here, too. And Brian's here for which one? H?
Yeah, we can do that, right, because... What do you want to do here?
Yeah, I guess you may as well, right? Send everybody home.
Yeah, right.
I believe, Brian, Vaughn, are you still on the phone? It's supposed to be. Well, maybe he stepped away.
I'm sorry, I think I was muted.
There he is.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think this is pretty much a ministerial matter unless you have any questions, but I just did want to stay on the phone, just because if any question came up, just because we were just back in front of the planning board recently on this matter, and there was, you know, a plan revision, but it really shouldn't impact anything you're doing, but just in case there were any questions, I just wanted to hang out and be available to answer any questions.
So Brian, it's a new subdivision, right? So we're just accepting a right of easement because it's a new subdivision roads?
Exactly.
Okay. Pretty routine, planning board request them whenever we have a new subdivision.
Well, we appreciate that, that we're staying on top of this and not trying to catch it after the train leaves the station, so that's all good. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
That one we do have to vote on.
Yes, we do.
On each, yep.
On each, okay. So I will, your motion to accept and sign the right-of-way easement from RCG West Mill N A LLC.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen accept and sign the right-of-way easement from RCG West Mill N A as presented.
Second.
Great. Any more discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes 5-0. All right.
All right, Mr. Chair, that brings us back up to new business A and B. I know it's a little confusing when we jump around like that.
All right. So vote on National Grid Verizon New England joint poll petition poll 873, as we had our hearing earlier today. Any questions for follow-up from what went through in our hearing this, earlier? I want to say this morning, it seemed like a while ago.
Mr. Chairman, I vote, a motion that we accept the National Grid Verizon New England joint poll petition for the relocation of poll number 873.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. There's no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes 5-0. And then a vote on the National Grid poll petition poll 834, as we heard earlier.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we accept the National Grid poll petition for the relocation of poll number 834.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Motion passes 5-0. All right. Request to amend the Commission for Inclusion, Equity and Diversity Name and Mission Statement, and I believe also had the first meeting, too. Correct, Dean?
Yes, we did. Yes.
That's great. So why don't you tell us about that before we take action here, if you would?
So the commission met on Tuesday, October 20th, and the discussion came up of the commission's name, and the commission requests that the name change, be changed to the Commission on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. The reason being is that the acronym for inclusion, equity and diversity is IED, and someone brought up that that has a negative connotation as a roadside bomb.
Yes.
So the commission said, we don't really want to have that acronym, so that's why the reversal and the change in the ordering of the committee name.
Fair enough.
The sec-
That was a good cap. I was not a fan of that, but you're right.
Well, it's better than diversity, inclusion and equity, too.
Yep. And if you change them the other way, it spells DIE.
Right.
So that's, we went with D E I. The second request is to strike the word tolerance in the mission statement and insert the word acceptance. They feel that that's a more appropriate word. Tolerance is very different than acceptance. And so the committee puts forth those two requests. And if you look in the packet, I included a marked-up version of the mission statement to reflect those two changes.
Well, thank you. And there is a world of difference when you, certainly anybody who has children knows the difference between tolerance and acceptance, right? So I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the two recommendations presented to us by the Commission on Inclusion, Equity and Diversity, so as to reflect the name change to the Commission on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Further, that the word tolerance be struck in, be, the striking of the word tolerance from the mission statement and replaced with the word acceptance.
Thank you.
A second.
All right, second. Any more discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes 5-0. Thanks, Steve, for getting rolling there. Okay, and then our follow-up to diversion, equity and inclusion is we have appointment of one more board member, correct?
Yep, well, we have to sign the access and maintenance easement. Sorry, I missed one, I missed D.
How could I miss D?
I don't know, it's a big one.
Yeah. Vote to sign access and maintain easement for lot 72B Wood Lane.
Right, so just like the other easement, what we're doing here is actually, it's a stormwater maintenance easement. So we're not saying that we're taking over the stormwater maintenance, but we want to be able to have the access to it if there's something we need to do in the future, again, being required by the planning board. Been pretty standard on most of the stormwater work that we're doing currently.
They're on top of things, that's for sure.
We're trying.
Any other questions or comments related to this maintenance easement?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen accept and sign the easement as presented for lot 72B Wood Lane.
I'll second that. Thank you. There's no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Passes 5-0. Right now, we're on the commission, I just wanted to stay with it, but to that end, we're appointing another member to the commission. Is that correct?
Yes. Last meeting, we added another seat to the board, a representative from the LGBTQ community, and Phil and I met with Jen Bauer, and we'd like to appoint her to the committee.
Great. I think she's a great addition. I know Jen's very outspoken and engaged.
I think that it's important to emphasize the diversity, too, of the perspective she brought. I mean, she brought quite the passion, and I think, I guess, information as far as, you know, just relations between different groups that don't typically interact and how we can improve them, I mean, just from her own life experiences. So I found the perspective to be so much more beyond LGBTQ, but, I mean, we're excited for gender joint.
Absolutely.
And then I know that D has already looped her in as we prepared to present her name today.
Yeah, just to make sure that the committee is as diverse as it can be.
That's great. Well, this is an opportunity to make it what we want it to be.
And she did attend our first meeting, and I think she's an excellent addition to the team.
Awesome. All right. Well, those are endorsements, so I'll hear a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, or that we appoint, excuse me, Jennifer Bauer through Chapin Road to the Commission for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, for a term ending three years from the state. We're not doing the full three years. We'll only do it one year.
You ready to have it start up?
She falls in the stagger for one year. Okay. I amend that and then say June, I would assume then June 30th, 2021. Okay? I amend that.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition. Passes 5-0. Welcome, Jen. You're already in the mix. Good. Okay. Request of the Exchange Club to use our town common on May 22nd, 2021, to June 13th, 2021, for the annual Field of Honor. Anybody to speak to that, or just...
It's the typical annual Field of Honor event where they put all the flags out. They did have to, you know, change some of their events around that they did this year, but they were able to work with us very quickly to move to doing virtual events and still able to get the flags out despite the coronavirus this last year. So we're looking forward to seeing, hopefully by then, fingers crossed, we're all together having the ceremony. But they're very prompt, which I appreciate. So we're happy to see this so early.
The only change is they are annually. Now, I suppose that the request actually of many people, I guess, and contacted them, it could be of longer... So now they'll cover Memorial Day through, like, and...
People just love it. And they come from out of town to see it. It does, when you round a corner and look up or whatever, it does take your breath away. So they do nice work.
That's great. All, hear a motion, make it official.
Chair, I move we approve the request of the Exchange Club to use the town common from May 22nd, 2021, to June 13th, 2021, for the Field of Honor.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? None opposed. Passes 5-0. All right. I think we've covered all our new business. So just approval of our minutes from our open session of October 5th, 2020. Any changes or comments to that?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the minutes from October 5th, 2020.
Thank you.
Second.
Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Passes 5-0. All right. Consent. Sign the warrant for November 3rd, 2020 election. This is make it all official.
I was going to send, I believe it's gone out.
Yeah? But I think we do have to execute this technically.
I, I, I agree, but I was like, whoa, wait a minute.
So for all our work, make sure you vote, please. All right? And then we have acceptance of donations to the library from Mr. and Mrs. Peter LaFond and an amount of $500, and from Mrs. Brenda Murphy and the amount of $100. So we appreciate that, and I think we'll send a letter acknowledging that to them for support. And then we're also waiver of first refusal for the sale of an affordable unit at 3, at 34 Empire Drive. I think that covers all our consent items, right? Yeah. All right. Old business.
Hopefully it's going to hold on.
Yeah, yeah. Let's vote on it.
I move approval of consent items A, B and C as stated by the chair.
Second.
Any other discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. All consent items passed. Now on to old business. Anything? Anybody's favorite screen? All right. Town managers report, other than we had the very large update.
The great is quick things. So we did have our drive-through food, uh, drive-through flu clinic this weekend, and I want to thank our emergency management team who were activated due to the size of it, as well as Caroline Ibberton, who, I don't know how she's doing it right now, but we had 270 cars pre-register.
Wow.
570 people were in those cars. And that's just who pre-registered in advance, not just people who got in line. And so we're still tallying the numbers, but, I mean, it was eight, if you went by it, they were under a tent, multiple lanes. We got really good feedback on it. I don't think we'll ever be doing flu clinics not like that again in the future, I bet, but it went really well. And then, as everyone knows, Columbia Gas is no longer with us, and we have transitioned to Eversource. Our representative from Eversource will come to our next meeting, just introduce himself to all of you, talk a little bit about the company. And then I just wanted to plug our Turkey Town to Spooky Town contest. So we are doing a Halloween contest. I made up the, I was very proud of myself, Rosemary, thank you very much. It's like, ooh, Turkey Town. But, so we...
Pets.
I know, so maybe think of it. So we do have a lot of people who have already sent their houses in, but you have till, I think, Thursday to send in pictures of your house decorated, and the top three winners are going to get $50 gift cards.
How fun is that?
It was pretty fun, and we've gotten a lot of really good ones, so.
That's great.
That's all there is.
Great, great.
May I, may I ask something, maybe something that you don't want to consider a lot of people? I don't, Laura and I were talking about it as well, was Chris, a little bit, is how we're going to handle Halloween. Are we, you know, how do we distribute the candy? I didn't know if it would be something maybe the Board of Health might like to weigh in on. For me, I was thinking that my husband and myself will hand out candy, but with a glove on. We won't let the children reach into the bucket, and just, we would wear a glove to pass it out to the kids. And Laura came up with some ideas for, so I was just wondering if they, if they have any idea, or do they just not want to comment on it?
No.
And just let everybody?
Yeah. There's CDC guidance that exists right now about Halloween, and I think we've shared once, but right now Steve and Casey and our new part-time inspector that we just hired are working on a funner. Funner, is that a real word? More fun. It's late.
She's sounding like a child, too.
A more, more interesting way to portray that, and it's going to be going out this week. What we've been saying is to avoid having multiple children putting their hands in the same basket. A lot of people are doing the individually wrapped items and laying them out. I don't know if any of you saw the, there was a fifth, a third grader who wrote a letter to Governor Baker and said that his solution to this problem was king-sized candy bars.
There you go.
And I was like, that's very native. So maybe you know that kid's route, but...
Or mail orders from ye olde Pepper.
Dollar bills, I don't know, but we are going to be putting out guidance this week as well. We have set the hours, I think, from 5:00 to 7:00. And we're encouraging people to use personal responsibility, do what they think is right, and also to respect people whose lights are not on. There's some people who are not going to want to participate in Halloween this year, and I think we have to all respect that, so, but we will put something out.
That's great.
Thank you.
So, Segment's updates, comments?
Oh, I have...
Go ahead, shoot.
I have kind of a strange comment this year, and unfortunately, and it might be as a result of COVID, that everybody just wants to reach out and be part of the community. We generally have 90 wreaths that could get donated, and I have probably reaching close to a request of about 300. So I'm letting the word out that there will be disappointed people this year. People were very excited and got it in right away, and we were sold out again in a matter of days. But I will, we appreciate the enthusiasm and excitement, but we can't expand the program anymore. We're already, we're already maxed out as it is. But just to let you know that we will be returning your checks over the next few weeks, and thank you for your interest, but we got swamped, swamped. So I think it's a good thing. It shows great community spirit and people just wanting to engage into the holiday season. But unfortunately, we just can't, we just can't go beyond what we're doing. DPW is already, just already stretched out with trying to get things ready for lights and things like that. But thank you so much to everybody for looking to jump in.
Phil, anything? Dan?
So we participated in townwide cleanup, which I think worked really well. I think they said they picked up 850 pounds of trash. So we...
That's good and bad, isn't it?
Good and bad, good and bad. You know, we walked, basically, the, our family did like the Faulkner Road up through the track and all that stuff, so I think that that went really well. And what else? Oh, I, the CPC committee has appointed their next chair, which is Brian Roach, and they're looking forward to the new proposals and, or requests for funding, and to see what that brings this year.
Nothing, just happy Halloween. Also, well, there's the two dinners at the Stevens estate, and I think you said one's already sold out. Was the, is that the early or the late seating?
I believe the late one is sold out.
So the early seating still has available?
I believe the early seating still has, and the early seating is the one that you could bring older children to.
Okay.
Maybe that's why it's not sold out. They want to just go out as a couple.
It looks like it's going to be a lot of fun.
That's great. You know, we're dealing with the pandemic, but there are ways to, as a community, to do things, so that's great. Now, our next meeting is scheduled for next Monday. I'm just wondering whether or not we make sense to roll it back another week. I don't know if we've got anything that pressing. What's the general sense? Melissa, what do you?
Okay, roll back. So the only thing that we have pressing for next week is that, well, it's not pressing, we could, we could move it back. It's just the budget schedule, the budget goals, and the Eversource gentleman was going to be coming.
Why don't we just have it then?
Yeah.
Get ourselves back onto our schedule.
Okay. I asked the question, so we're all...
Because it, you know, it'll start to impede on Thanksgiving week and everything else.
Well, we have, that's, that's...
Yeah, National Grid.
No meetings the week before Thanksgiving.